Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. We do have a special recognition this evening, so for that I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we did, I believe it was just this past year, we have three Auburn High teachers that are being recognized by Mass Education and Research as 2020 Partners in Excellence Teacher Award recipients. This award comes for their exemplary work in the Advanced Placement STEM and English Program. So we have Michael Young, who taught AP BC Calculus, Nicolee Prevot, who taught AP Biology, and Jeff Berg, who also taught AP Biology. So they're among 25 educators across Massachusetts being recognized for their outstanding contributions to student success. So just as happened last year, there will be an awards program for them in their honor on Wednesday, April 8th, at the Halling Center at College of the Holy Cross. So I wanted to offer them congratulations for their work, not only those individuals, but for the others as well who may not have been recognized, give up Saturdays for those study sessions for students and teach this town. Great job.
That's great. Awesome.
That's wonderful.
Always nice that, we know we have a great staff, but it's nice when they're recognized at that level. And do we have any citizens' comments? Seeing none. And we do not have student representatives because they have homework.
They do.
Mr. Hanfield, can you explain that? Why they have homework on?
Through the chair. One clarification. Aaron, I think, is helping out at the chorus concert tonight up at the high school.
Okay. Well, they're excused, I guess. And I would now seek approval of the minutes of October 30.
I'll make a motion for the minutes of October 30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to join the leadership team in kickoff our budget presentations for FY '21. So good evening again. And as I stated, we have the first of two nights of presentations for the FY '21 budget. So starting here, and as you can see here in the audience, we have almost all of our new students. Thank you, Rich. Almost all of our leadership team members in attendance this evening. This really to recognize the teamwork. It really is the efforts of all of the people in this room and all of those back who occupy these buildings, who work together for support of our students. And as noted, it really does come back to teamwork in all that we do. It's really never about one individual. It's a group effort. So if you remember, it was back now, two years ago, in 2017, when we came together with 140 community and school representatives. And we decided together what we believe the answer to the question, how will the Auburn Public Schools continue to evolve to ensure that our preschool through grade 12 students are prepared to meet the opportunities and challenges of a changing world? And the result of that is the strategic plan. And we've provided updates to you since you first approved that plan back in the spring of 2018. You will see evidence throughout the budget presentations of activities and proposals that are in direct support of this plan. Part of that plan talks about our shared core values as well as our mission and vision, those being the same ones that we've had now for a number of years and really do drive our work. So tonight, you're going to hear presentations from the building principals across each of our five schools. What you're going to hear tonight, as well as tomorrow, from those central office and other department members is really about our commitment to excellence and our commitment to continuous improvement. We believe as a district that no matter how much progress we make, there is more that always can be made. So you'll see evidence in this budget of that, as well as the priorities as set by you as school committee members, as well as the leadership team. But just a little background data to set some context for us. So the dark blue line down at the bottom, the district numbers, that shows in the current school year, we have across our district 26% of our students whose families qualify for free or reduced, their finances qualify them for free or reduced lunch. Now, it's actually a reduction from last year, which had us at 32%. But as you can see in the column to the far right, it lists by school, and there is some variability of how many, what percentage of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. You're also presented here, and you'll see evidence in principal's budget. This is a class size projection data. One of the priorities as set by not only the school committee, but the leadership team, is really to try and maintain class sizes at an appropriate level. You'll see based on, listed up at the top far left is the Bryn Mawr class sizes projected for next year. And you'll see at grade one, is there an addition of a teacher? And on the right at the top is the Packard-Chalk class sizes. So really, pretty much in lockstep. You'll note, you remember that last year, we added a teacher at grade one for Packard-Chalk, so that individual will go to grade two, or someone from that grade will go to grade two to keep those class sizes appropriate. On the bottom left are the proposed Swanson Road class size projections. You'll note that in grade three, currently this school year, we have nine teachers in each of the three grades. What we've done is to take one of those to put it down into first grade in that way to keep both class sizes at grades one and three at appropriate levels. On the bottom right, in that middle section, is the Auburn Middle School class sizes. And then the Auburn High School class sizes are far more difficult to quantify. The reason being because other than their subjects that they must take, there are an awful lot of electives. So it really ranges between somewhere between 16 and 24. But I would tell you, we find that those class sizes to be appropriate as well. So this chart you saw last year, and we've added in the 2019 data. So as you can see, as noted on this chart here, so overall, we had an enrollment loss of eight, 66 students. Wasn't going to wear the glasses, but I've seen as I need to. 66 students from 2009 to 2012. But then the tides really turned. So from 2012 to 2019, we've seen an increase of 296 students. Now, if we back out the school choice students, that's an increase of 214 students in total. I am going to share with you later this evening now, as you know, you authorized the NESDEC to do an enrollment projection. And Dr. Chamberlain and I had a recent meeting, telephone meeting with the gentleman who did that for us. And what he is predicting is a net increase of three students across the district next year. So really to start to see some slowing growth, and that's across the district. Particularly at our elementary, we will see a little bit of a bump. At our middle school, it still stays pretty flat as well. This is actually a piece of the report. And down here in the bottom right, this section in here, it shows the three students or one tenth of one percent increase is being projected for next school year. One of the big unknowns in this budget cycle is the Student Opportunity Act. So I'm sure that you've heard about it. I know I talked with you about it prior to the Fall Special Town Meeting. So both the Senate and the House have passed a budget of, have passed a, they are both in support of increasing education funding by 1.5 billion over the next seven years. Now, what has not yet been determined, to my knowledge anyway, I would say, is the actual funding source for this. So it is what someone said, it's a law that they've put into place, but there's no money necessarily attached to it yet. So a big question is, what will this mean for the Auburn Public Schools? And one thing I had shared with you back a couple, maybe a month or so ago, was that the bulk of the money for this is really directed for the urban centers in some of those communities where there's a great disparity, much lower than the per pupil amounts that is spent as compared to some of our most affluent communities. So how this actually shakes out still remains to be seen. But I would say to you that we have in the Auburn Public Schools really enjoyed an extended period of growth, not only in students, but also in staff and programs. And we are anticipating a tight budget, anticipated. We don't know about the Student Opportunity Act. We are expecting generally flat student enrollment. And as we always do, we have been and will continue to examine our programs closely. But the most important question that we pose against any decision we're trying to make is, how will this impact students and their achievement? Because it is after all, the students. So we're going to, you're going to hear an awful lot of numbers from the principals this evening. But keep in mind, it's about providing opportunities for students, whether they be athletic, academic, fine arts, or in any variety of other means. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the principals to start the presentations. And here we have, okay. So the elementary team is going to be starting first, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
So good evening. It's great to see you. And through the chair, and on behalf of Mrs. Stanek, Mrs. Mahanis, Fitzley, Lewis, and I, I'd like to begin this year's budget presentation with a quote from Mia Hamm. "Celebrate what you've accomplished, but raise the bar a little higher each time you succeed." It's with that understanding and that drive that we continue the great work of everything that we do in the Auburn Public Schools. And though there are many accomplishments, there are many things to celebrate. We're always working to improve and meet the needs of every child who walks through our doors each and every day. I'd like to start, or we would like to start off with a brief snapshot of some of the accomplishments made over the past year with last year's budget. That allows to do so. In teaching and learning, we continue to advance our students' academics through rigorous programming. This past year, we implemented the Elevate Science Program and continued to learn all of the programmatic elements. Briefly, our collective growth realized K-5 showed that we exceeded the state average comparatively on MCAS in many strands. To highlight just a few, in ELA was craft and structure of reading and understanding, as well as integration of knowledge and ideas. In math, a few that bear mention are geometry, along with extending understanding and short answers. Moreover, in science of note were the strands in earth and space, science and physical science. These brief highlights really speak to the consistency as well as the structure of our Wonders Go Math and Elevate Science programs. In technology, we continue to use a variety of technology tools to provide students opportunities to practice and apply the skills in multiple platforms. Using this platform specifically with all its facets, through the curriculum programming we've implemented over the past few years. While on the other hand, we recognize the needs for students to also interact socially, as well as with hands-on materials, we've implemented some No Tech Days to remind us that there are many ways in which we can still teach and learn and are not solely dependent upon technology, which to the chagrin of maybe of my colleagues, Mr. Bouvier. We're always seeking innovative ways to strengthen our existing partnerships. But this past year and the years moving forward, we've spent time proactively seeking ways to build new relationships with those in the community that typically have not been involved. Some trying to find creative ways to engage diversity in conversations, whether in our school councils, through literature we've purchased in our libraries, One Calls that have been translated, or the clubs that have been offered after school to expose all of our students to the beauty of different cultures. We've also selected assemblies that enrich our students' perspective through the arts and culture. In health and wellness, we continue to foster a healthy lifestyle through our cafeteria offerings, as well as food selections of our before and after-school programs and clubs. We've also incorporated mindfulness messages in all of our schools, along with mindful school-wide days to slow down and just enjoy each other as a community. This past year, of note, new flooring was installed in both Swiss and Bryn Mawr. Finally, in transitions, we successfully were able to provide our students multiple opportunities to meet with a variety of peers from pre-K to high school, whether as readers, mentors, models, leaders, in activities or lessons. Our school communities have successfully made some consorted efforts to bridge some interactions, not only between our schools, but our community. Teachers have met throughout the spring to discuss vital information to ensure that every student had a successful transition into new buildings or new classrooms. Additionally, using Rocket One, which we all love, we were able to provide some targeted students added opportunities for specific visits to our schools to ease in those transitions, as well as dozens of meetings with parents to develop those new relationships with administration and teachers. To just highlight a bit of the learning and the innovation, we took a little bit of a different spin this year. We have a short video. This one is a spotlight on Swiss, but we're also going to end with a spotlight on Bryn Mawr and Packard-Chalk. Bring us back. So as stated at the beginning, through, though there is much to celebrate.
Wow, too so much. Helping out.
Thanks, elephant toothpaste.
You got it, you got it.
There you go.
That would be exciting. Okay.
Exciting.
Sorry. There we go. So I'd like to take a few moments now to look at things to come in teaching and learning. Over the course of the next year, we hope to continue our curriculum refinement as we move forward in our fifth year of the Go Math implementation, our fourth year of wonders, and our second year using Elevate Science. Specifically, we'll be looking to really identify where power standards are in each of the areas of ELA math and science, as well as social studies, so that our instruction is focused on the critical grade level learning and thereby strengthening our students through more intensive opportunities and practicing these particular standards. Our English language learners intervention and curriculum components are being refined and looked at carefully so that the embedded language objectives are part of intervention, as well as throughout the course of the day to strengthen them as their learners. Our Elevate Science program is quite comprehensive, and we're now seeking to develop the best ways to approach complex concepts in very concrete ways, while also providing students hands-on experiences, along with the rich texts and literature to broaden their understanding of concepts. In that same vein, we're thrilled to be able to have project lead the way at all three of our schools. This innovative program not only complements the Elevate Science, but deepens students' scientific understanding of science, technology, engineering, and math. Through these units, students have firsthand experience in the design process, and it's taught in a very thoughtful, engaging, as well as very exciting manner. This year, we'll also continue our work to update our history and social science curriculum to ensure that we're aligned with the new state standards. As always, we're heavily dependent upon data, making sure that all of our decisions are made thoughtfully in the best interest of our students and their particular needs. Seeking to better understand the needs of each and every student and develop instructional focus reinforcements during every block of the day, we'll continue to research and develop hands-on, creative, differentiated opportunities so that every child not only gets what they need instructionally, but has ample opportunities using multiple modalities so that we can ensure that they're successful in meeting those grade level standards. We're also going to be looking more closely at the trends, as well as specific needs of diverse populations, whether English language learners, students on 504s, or students with IEPs. New this year, we'll be administering a diagnostic social emotional screener so that we can better support those students who may be at risk or may need a small enrichment block to practice or learn the skills they need to be stronger, more competent learners. Also, the administration is spending time this year attending professional development around cultural proficiency. And we'll bring, we'll be bringing back these learnings to provide staff professional development within our buildings. The hope is to create a deeper awareness of the needs of our ever-expanding diverse population. Finally, though co-teaching is an inclusive strategies, the philosophy therein is not new to the district. We have many new co-teaching partnerships, as well as new staff joining us to ensure the inclusive philosophy continues, as well as those strategies and methodologies, we'll continue that professional development therein. I'd now like to invite Mrs. Mahan up to the podium to speak to technology. Thank you.
Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to thank you all for your continued support. Tonight, I will share with you our vision for technology and community partnership in our elementary schools. Keeping aligned with the district's strategic plan, we will continue to promote safe, healthy, and ethical behavior. Our tech facilitators will work on ensuring all students have the knowledge of what good digital citizenship looks like, focusing on cyber safety. They will continue to work with all students on identifying sites that are safe and how to protect their passwords. At Swanson Road, students will learn how to identify and cite reliable sources that are purposeful. Our focus at the elementary level will be to embed technology appropriately at each grade level. We will strive to design user-friendly web pages which allow families access to additional information that can be used to support learning at home. And we will continue to use social media to promote and highlight school events and student learning. Teachers K-5 will be provided professional development as a transition from Google Classroom to Schoology. We have transitioned to Power School and continue to discover new tools within that platform to share vital information between staff. We will continue to streamline access for all families and students by utilizing ClassLink. Here, we continue to expand community learning service projects at all levels, locally, nationally, and internationally. We plan on broadening cultural events within our school. The expertise of our staff will be used to broaden the homeschool connection by hosting informational sessions throughout the year at identified PTO meetings. We will seek new ways of using public service workers in schools to celebrate successes such as incentive awards, citizenship awards, and High Five Fridays. The partnership between the Auburn Public Library will continue, allowing all kindergarteners the opportunity to obtain a library card, along with partnering the Swanson Road for literacy night. We are looking to expanding mentoring opportunities between grade levels, such as grade two and three, five and six, and powering a mentor program with the high school. Volunteers play a critical role in our schools. We will look at targeting intergenerational relationships in different aspects of the day, such as recess, lunch, and academic classes. Now, I will turn it over to Jennifer Stanek, principal of Packard-Chalk.
Good evening, and thank you for your ongoing support. I would like to share our vision for health, wellness, safety, and transitions. The safety of our students, staff, and visitors is a top priority throughout the district. We will continue to emphasize the ALICE techniques for all staff. The safety teams thoroughly review practices on a regular basis and make changes as needed to ensure we are all well-equipped for any and all emergencies. Over the past few years, we have held a yearly meeting with the AA bus drivers to review our expectations and explain our elementary bus award incentives. AA also conducts biannual evacuation drills for all students at our buildings. We will continue to strengthen our partnership and emphasize safety. We are always seeking ways to update our learning environments, both inside and out. New bubbler and water filling stations have been installed, and a sprinkler system is in the works for Bryn Mawr. Playground upgrades continue to happen with the recent installation of musical equipment to our playgrounds, as well as climbing apparatus at Swanson Road. To promote lifelong health and wellness, we are going to be asking for adult recess volunteers to play organized games and facilitate dancing for our students. Through the generosity of the Auburn Mass PTO, we have been able to purchase additional equipment to provide a diverse experience for our students. We are thrilled to be offering unified physical education as Auburn expands our Unified School District initiative. Our six-day rotating schedule has allowed us to offer physical education to our preschool classrooms this year, which we hope to sustain in the future. Additionally, the PE staff is sharing newsletters with families to promote physical well-being, both in and out of school. Health standards are being integrated into physical education classrooms or wellness blocks to teach and promote lifelong healthy habits. We are excited about expanding the grow towers to pack in potentially Bryn Mawr. Our cafeteria staff, along with our students, will grow the greens and then get to enjoy the fruits of their labor. As you know, student safety encompasses not only physical safety, but the emotional and social safety of our students. We continue to look for ways to expand mindfulness practices by increasing the opportunities for mindfulness days, classroom meetings, school-wide mindful moments, as well as collaborative work between our counselors and social workers. Expansion of the Art for the Heart intervention will allow students to foster creative expression, which can lead to healing and improved mental well-being. Our counseling staff will continue to provide weekly lessons through the use of the Second Step Program. During the school day, they, along with our social workers, will provide targeted interventions or counseling to proactively support individual needs. In addition to whole class and small group instruction, they will provide individual meetings with both students and parents to discuss and address unique needs and circumstances, as well as share available school and community resources. Part of our students' social emotional well-being hinges on our transitional planning. We are dedicated to ensuring smooth transitions for our students to lessen anxiety and create positive experiences. Each year, we look to expand our step-up days, which now include additional visits through the use of Rocket One. We are looking to expand our grade-level relationships by partnering classes for various activities. School-specific welcome videos have been created for students and families and will be updated annually. Targeted transition plans for identified students are created in collaboration with the school psychologist, counselors, principals, and, when allowed, include our social workers. Students might be guided through map-making of new classrooms and schools, or staff pictures may be shared for summer viewing. The commonalities that we share through our positive behavioral interventions and supports will continue to create a bridge for our students from school to school. New families join our district at various times throughout the year, with a large number during the summer months. Not only will we invite kindergarten families to our summer orientation, but we will now also include transferring families, much like the colleges. We are always looking for ways to bring families together and share resources. We look forward to expanding events for our families which promote cultural proficiency and diversity. Thank you again for your ongoing support, which enables us to provide our students and families with excellence. My colleagues and I will now share our elementary school budgets, which will allow us to sustain our mission, vision... our mission, vision, and goals in line with the district's strategic plan. As you can see, all line items have been level-funded with the exception of principal dues, classroom and printing supplies for Paketog. The increase in principal dues is due to the Project Lead the Way grant expectations. The slight increase in the classroom supply line is to offset any undetermined expenses as well as the addition of consumable supplies for science and STEM programming, as well as a slight increase in printing supplies due to increased enrollment numbers. Are there any questions for me in regards to the PAC budget?
I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you. Now Marie Mahan will share the Bryn Mawr budget.
In line with Paketog, all line items have been level-funded with the exception of principal dues and classroom supplies as well, for the same reason stated by Mrs. Stanek. Additionally, there is a slight increase in guidance supplies to enhance our PBIS initiative. At this time, are there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thorough, thank you.
Susan LaFett. Similar to Paketog and Bryn Mawr, it's a level-funded budget. You may see just a slight increase in a few lines, one being postage, that went up 100. Also, principal dues, but had been explained for Project Lead the Way. Another line item, classroom supplies, went up just slightly to offset any increased numbers of students or supplies needed. Same in the line of printing supplies. And one audiovisual to help replace any of the items that we may have in our classrooms. Are there any questions regarding Swanson Road?
No questions.
You tried to keep it conservative.
Well done.
And our quote being, "Together, we may give our children the roots to grow and the wings to fly," that's truly what I believe. And at the beginning, we spotlighted Swanson, but we also have very progressive thinkers at Arcata Two Schools. So, I'd like to highlight them. Oh.
Trees nice.
Trees. It may have to be through yours. Well, we'll tell you. We'll email it to everyone, and we'll post it hopefully on our Facebook page for everyone to view, but it is adorable. Adorable. I can only tell you it's adorable. But, thank you. At this time, I think I'll introduce Mr. Desto.
Well, Mr. Desto, do note that all of these presentations will be posted on the website as well, so after they go through tonight, tomorrow, we're going to post it on the website. We'll make sure that that is out from everybody, so we will leave on to him.
Thank you.
I might be the only one that's glad that video didn't play. You know how hard it is to follow kindergarten kids' videos? And I promise I won't do this every year, but I have to start by letting you know again how grateful I am just to be here. Not just the opportunity to present the budget to you, but just to be here in general. To have a chance to lead a school again, and one, I might add, that's full of great kids and dedicated professionals. We had a good year last year. Some might say it was a great year. I wasn't satisfied with it. We're off to a better start this year, but it is a really, really great place. And, you know, you've given me a winning team to work with, Dr. Brunel, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I'm looking forward to talking a little bit about our middle school and letting you know why we're so proud of it. And so, those are some of our students doing volunteer work, and if you notice, the boy to your far left has got a weapon in his hand. It's, I'm not sure that we should, he's standing there with his, I don't know what that thing is, I think it's a digging utensil. Everything that we do at the school starts with this, and I'm not going to, last year, when I spoke on this evening, I talked about why this exists and what each one of these steps means to our students, or what they, at least the idea of what they're supposed to mean is. I won't do that tonight. If you have any questions, though, please don't hesitate to ask me. It's quite simple, it's certainly not, no pun intended, rocket science, but we just ask that all members of our school community treat everyone the right way, help others when they recognize that there's a need for it. Very important for middle school kids, number three, is start to learn to help themselves when they need help, to be able to speak up and say, "I'm not okay, and I need somebody to help me." We focus, number four, on not on necessarily what your grades are all the time, or your, you know, intellect level or anything like that, but just getting a little bit better each day. Because as I said last year, not everybody's wired to get straight A's easily. I know I wasn't as a student, but everyone can improve. And finally, we ask our students to try to participate in school activities, and we have 27 of them to offer after school throughout the course of the year, thanks to the support of the upper administration and school committee. So, there's really something for everybody, and I'll get to that in just a second. So where we are now, just some things that have been accomplished and are in the process of being accomplished, begin with our MCAS improvements, as my colleagues could have said, Susan and Casey, coming up. We're among the highest in the state, and we're proud of that. We met or exceeded our targets in, that should say, 21 out of 24. I'm really disappointed in myself that if you're going to miss on something like that, you should miss low, not high. Miss high, not low, but I missed low. So, it's actually 21 out of 24 categories, and we're proud of that, but we also know that you have to keep on chipping away and keep on working at it. We've implemented a what I need block at the end of the day for students based on a survey we gave our students last year, which essentially asked them, "What do you need from us in order to make the day less stressful?" Because school is like the, for many kids, it's the top stressor in their lives. And so, overwhelmingly, they said, "We need time at the end of the day to breathe, get our stuff together, and if we want to, to start our homework, or be able to go see a teacher before we leave." And so, we found a way with our new schedule to get 25 minutes at the end. It ends up being 20 by the time they transition. So it's not a long time, but, and it's still a work in progress because some kids are struggling with the idea that it's actually a class, it's not, you know, just a talking time, but it's helping a lot of kids. And I'm asking them as the days go along, and it's been good so far, and I think it's going to get even better. I want to say for the next three things that we are one of the, I don't know another middle school around here that has the combination of reading and math intervention programs for students who need a little more support in those important subjects, foreign language study in every grade level, six, seven, and eight. And I feel, this is not a statement that is supported by research, but it's my statement that we have the best STEM program in the area. I think, I don't know how it would be better. I'd like to go see one that someone thinks is better. Our kids in sixth grade, they experience media research and computer technology, so they learn basically about how to use their iPads better because they're now going to have to use them full-time as a one-to-one school. They learn media etiquette, social media etiquette, those kinds of things, some coding, some basic stuff that they carry into seventh grade when they have the first part of STEM, STEM I, and then eighth grade, they have STEM Part II. That's Mrs. Robbins's class, if you've ever heard that name. It's an exceptional hands-on class. And then also, technology engineering, which is more about, like designing, using the engineering process to design and build things and really work with your hands. And so, it's really a great progression, and I noticed that Dr. Lopez said they have the future engineers, I think you said, but we have the young engineers. Casey must have the aspiring engineers, and then they just become engineers. But, it's a nice progression that we have throughout the district and something to be very proud of. As I said, we have 27 extracurricular activities right now, and just to name a few of the categories, we try to say there's something for everyone. We have sports, performing arts, visual arts, a games club for kids who like to play card games, video games, board games, writing, reading, clubs, engineering, journalism, robotics. We have a math team, we have student leadership organizations, and so, there is something, we think, for everybody. We still continue to have strong community partnerships, advanced school safety measures, as all our schools do with ALIS training for our students and staff through the Auburn Police. We're in year five of our one-to-one iPad initiative, and I can tell you truthfully, even from last year to this year, I see most of the kids being more comfortable with it. Fewer problems with the distribution of the iPads, with the amount of time we have to talk to kids about inappropriate use of the iPad, much fewer so far than it was in the beginning of last year. So I think that's going in the right direction. We have the Bright Program, which is, you'll hear about it if you haven't already, the social emotional program, which is a nice transitional thing, and we're in the middle of our first annual House Cup, which is modeled after the Harry Potter House Cup. So it pits the grade levels against one another in little friendly competition, we think they're friendly competitions. And I just put it, noted at the bottom for when you have more time to look at it, that they all do tie in with the strategic plan, and the codes are there. So where we think we're headed, and there's so much that I could have put here, trying to stick to just some of the bigger things. First of all, is continued academic improvements, that's one of the main reasons we're here. And through our departments, our teacher teams, and our, just among other things, our literacy leadership team, we have a process by which we think that we can continue to make improvement. Certainly, the message is clear that we need to keep getting better. We emphasize interpersonal skills regularly. Almost every employer you talk to and you say, "What are you looking for?" And employees that are young coming out of school, they almost always say, "The ability to work well with others, to tolerate other types of people," and so forth. So, we're working on that constantly. We did not accomplish this last year, but we're going to try to this year. Looking to do student-produced video mini-lessons, which would be for parents, like for example, social media, every week there's a new one that the kids are using. So if the kids themselves could make a video to show the parents, "Hey, this is what's out there," there are kids who would do that, trust me. Wouldn't give it away. We're trying to do that, but not just social media trends, but all other kinds of things associated with being a middle school student. We have now an eighth-grade civics curriculum, which is a fantastic thing because it's just a great opportunity for the kids to get to know what local government is like, what state government is like, national government, other things throughout the world, and we're looking towards doing more experiential things like mock town meetings and mock elections. And I continue to have school improvement teams that consist of our staff members, they're all divided up into these groups, which they voted were the topics we need to work on, and that they chose, everyone got their first or second choice to which one they wanted to be in. So it comes out to like seven to 10 people in each group, and it's been really good so far. It's a little off, except for the total, wouldn't you figure? So, let me just say that this ultimately is an increase of about $6,000, of exactly $6,695 overall, and the main part of that is in the classroom supplies area because we have to purchase a new set of health booklets. We're teaching health in seventh grade now, and we need new booklets next year. And also, the ELA department has requested replacements of two sets of novels that have been worn out over time, and the social studies department has requested Upfront Magazine, which is a current events magazine that keeps kids, like on a once-a-week basis, keeps them up to date on current events in a way that's appropriate to the age group. That was the biggest thing. There's small upgrades, increases in requests for art and music, which are basically just the teacher requests, okay? As I said, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to go back. I do have one personnel request that will be discussed, I think, in the fine arts presentation tomorrow night as well, and it is a .6 music teacher. .6 is three days a week for us, and that is to be able to continue the strings program. Right now, there are 24 kids in sixth grade currently doing the strings program, and next, right now, I think in fifth grade, there's 32, I believe was the number I was told. So, there's a large group coming up, and in order to continue that, the way it's been doing, the way we've been doing it, this is the personnel that we would need, but we are looking at other ways to possibly be able to do this as well, if it turns out that this is not sustainable in the long run. Okay? And that is all I have. If there are any questions, be happy to try my best to answer them.
Any questions?
I have one. I noticed the awards budget is going down. Are you giving out less awards, or?
No, but I still have some left.
Oh, okay.
From this year, and we also got some generous people in the area to help us out with some of that.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot for your time.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back before you again. As it goes every year, I bring up the end of the school's presentation, and it's probably fitting that I do so because all of the wonderful things that you've heard thus far, we reap the benefits of at Auburn High School, and we're able to do what we can do. So, my intention tonight is to try to be brief, but to highlight some of the key things that we have going on at Auburn High School right now. You've had the opportunity to spend time with us over the last couple of years through our pretty rigorous NIAS process. You've heard from the visiting committee, or, excuse me, you heard from Melissa LeBoeuf and Spencer Canard, our NIAS co-chairs on the NIAS committee's recommendations, I think, at the October 30 meeting. So we're in good shape, so, and we'll just highlight some things here. And just like everything else, it's aligned with our mission, the district vision, our core values that Dr. Brunel shared at the start. We've been very fortunate this year for a variety of reasons, one of which, and ties into what I previously stated, we were named one of America's Best High Schools by U.S. News and World Report. We were able to maintain our accreditation through NIAS, through, as you know, outstanding visiting committee report, and then a couple weeks ago, we were notified that Newsweek Magazine has named us as a top STEM high school in the United States. It's 5,000 high schools in the country recognized with that achievement, so we're very proud of that. But as I said at the outset of this evening, all of that's really able to be done because of the work and the preparation of our students as they come through PK to eight. So, we want to be very mindful of the team aspect of this. For us, these are things that, you know, you've seen before. One of the things that probably in the teaching and learning area that I would highlight, you know, in the learning walks, I'm sure Dr. Chamberlain will talk more about this tomorrow evening, but this year, we're really focused on engagement, engagement strategies of our students, how our teachers, you know, working to engage our kids to the maximum potential, or to their maximum potential. You've already heard the discussion around social studies curriculum revision at the bottom. We're working to realign our social studies curriculum, so it would involve U.S. history being taught in grades nine and 10, and world history going to grade 11, and then a civics and personal finance being added in the 12th grade year. That's the suggested route. We're working to kind of see what makes sense. We have some flexibility in how we implement that. But those are the two big things. The other things I'll list to here again, they're just ongoing every year. In terms of technology, you know, we've mentioned a lot of things already. Auburn High School's tried to have more of a Facebook presence. of the work and the preparation of our students as they come through PK to eight. So we want to be very mindful of the team aspect of this. For us, these are things that, you know, you've seen before. One of the things that, probably in the teaching and learning area, that I would highlight, you know, in the learning walks, I'm sure Dr. Chamberlain will talk more about this tomorrow evening, but this year, we're really focused on engagement. Engagement strategies of our students, how our teachers, you know, working to engage our kids to the maximum potential, or to their maximum potential. You've already heard the discussion around social studies curriculum revision at the bottom. We're working to realign our social studies curriculum, so it would involve U.S. history being taught in grades nine and 10, and world history going to grade 11, and then a civics and personal finance being added in the 12th grade year. That's the suggested route. We're working to kind of see what makes sense. We have some flexibility in how we implement that. But those are the two big things. The other things I'll list to here again, they're just ongoing every year. In terms of technology, you know, we've mentioned a lot of things already. Auburn High School's tried to have more of a Facebook presence this year than we have in years past, and I think we've been successful at doing that. I'd like to call your attention to the bottom. We are piloting PlayVS, which is a competitive gaming pilot program. The Massachusetts Secondary Schools Administrators Association oversees cheerleaders, and now they're overseeing competitive gaming. So this is actually something that's catching on across the country, and in February, we will have two teams of five students participating in this PlayVS, and it's just what it says, it's a competitive gaming experience. It's a, I guess it's kind of the 21st century athletics that we're starting to see come along, but it's housed underneath the Massachusetts Secondary School Administrators Association. So, you know, it's relatively short money, and we have a lot of kids that are really excited in it, so we're excited to see how that goes. And I suspect maybe at the end of that, in the spring, maybe we'll have them come in and talk about it. It's quite involved, and it's quite interesting. Community partnerships, you know, again, a number of these have already been spoken to this evening. Can't say enough about the town support that we receive each and every year. Also, I'd like to highlight the support from the Worcester County District Attorney's Office this year. Joe Reilly, you know, made it a point to visit our students in the evening and the daytime around some presentations that we had from vaping and, you know, dangers of mixing alcohol and prescription medication. So, you know, those are very powerful messages for our kids to hear, and we're very fortunate that we have their, that relationship in place with them. Health, wellness, and safety, again, you know, all the things that my colleagues have discussed already, you know, the Alice training, you know, bullying and harassment education continues, the alcohol-drug education intervention programs, our Rocket Fuel Leadership Program at Auburn Middle School, our CARE program at Swiss, and then 365Z, which I talked to you a little bit about October 30th. That's another initiative that's kicked off in our building, and that group will be coming forward after the holidays to kind of talk with you more in-depth about that. And then transitions, we continue, you know, with our AMS and AHS combo clubs, our eighth-grade transition experiences, our freshman year experience, restorative circles, that's extended into a sophomore year advisory. I think, as I talked to you about last year, the plan was to kind of fold that in over four years, so we're in year two of that implementation. We continue with our guidance groups and senior seminar for students in terms of what they're gonna do post-high school. In terms of our budget, or the supply budget here, you will see that there's some variance up and down on the lines, but, I mean, not anything major. Classroom supplies is up a little bit, and that's primarily due to some Algebra: Geometry and Algebra II companion licenses that go with students' textbooks, as well as supply line for the Bright program that Mr. Desto had talked about. Rite is an acronym for, if I can remember it correctly, Bridging Resilient Youth in Transition. It's a program that we started this year in the middle and high school as a kind of additional piece of service delivery to students who may be able to get to school but need some special accommodations while they're in school. It's kind of the, you know, it's kind of the in-between from, you know, classroom-related services that we can provide to, you know, kind of an alternative high school format. It's a program that's staffed by a clinician, as well as a regular education teacher. You know, it's a place where, you know, kids can come back if they've had excessive absences, it's a place they can come back if they are dealing with a medical issue, if they just need some extra TLC, you know, for four to six weeks. So some of that supply line is to help supply that new program. Textbooks, ebooks, that's all district-wide, and again, up and down, you know, the line items here, you know, there's some variance, but the bottom line, you know, was up above $3,000, and it's got to do with those things that I just previously mentioned. So overall, pretty lean, just enough to get what we need to get the job done. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Here's the chair, I just love that you're gonna introduce personal finance for seniors. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, so that, yeah, I mean, it's needed, without question, and I, you know, it's just a matter of how are we gonna deliver it? You know, there's, Dr. Brunel and myself and Mr. Desto, we're on a conference call, or webinar, rather, through Mass Association of School Superintendents last Friday. This grant money's available through the state that we'll be applying for, and then it just becomes a matter of how we decide to deliver it, you know? Do we, do we put it into United States history and stop, you know, at certain spots, like, you know, the rise of banks, and, you know, do we talk about banking at that point? You know, do we get to, you know, post-World War II and the housing boom, and then do we stop and talk about mortgages and make it applicable that way, or do we make it its own course, or? So there's all these different kind of questions that we're still hammering out, but, yeah, so, yeah, that's forthcoming, and I suspect in February, when I come forward with the program studies, you'll hear more about that, kind of the direction we've decided to go, and a few other things that we're looking at for next school year, too.
Great, I look forward to hearing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes the budget presentations for this evening. Tomorrow night, you'll hear from the central office, as well as athletics and fine arts facilities and technology. So unless you have any questions, we can perhaps, with your approval, we can let our principals go.
Any questions? No?
They're all really great presentations, thanks. We know it's a long day, so we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight, and I guess we'll see you all tomorrow night.
We should give them snacks.
Thanks, everybody. Would you want to go, you too?
I'm sorry, we were rushing out of BJ's when we saw you on Saturday.
No, 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 no.
Good night, thank you.
Hi, I know I owe both of you guys an email, and Craig, I owe you an email, too.
I know.
It's on me, I'm a hot mess right now.
Mary Ellen, I didn't want to bother them, but...
It's okay.
Has anything changed about seat belts on school buses? Or there's still no seat belts?
Still no seat belts on school buses.
I was wondering, because this was a bad bus accident in Milford today, and 11 children got taken to the hospital.
Oh, oh, wow, I heard about that.
And I was just talking about the safety, kind of made me wonder.
Yeah, yeah.
That, and that has changed.
Here's the chair, I did research on that before my kids went to school, and the issue was especially with the younger grades.
Yeah.
If there was a bad accident, to get them out would be very challenging. So the way that they create the, it's not ideal, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know it's a law in some states, but it made me think of it today, with the bus accident.
Did you hear about that?
Yeah, it was around supper time, I guess, maybe. So hopefully no one seriously injured.
I hope they're all right. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so as Mr. Handfield mentioned, as part of his budget presentation, Auburn High School was ranked out of 5,000 schools at the 4,248th spot, but important to note is, I did just a quick little research about this, there are actually 26, approximately 26,000 public high schools across the United States, and about an additional 10,000 private. So it seems like, is that a good place where we want to be? I think, you know, certainly to be within the top 5,000 in that number, which says in the top, you know, percentage that we'd like to be. Always looking to get better. I did want to share with you, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce, once again, this year, has awarded 12 mini grants totaling $3,000, and want to thank the Chamber, as you know, they're extremely generous in giving not only to the mini grants, but also scholarships to students. So I want to congratulate Karen Loach and Stephanie Mancini from the middle school, Danielle LaBeauf, Jared Khan, Erica Bush, Ally Schenkel, and Pam Broden, as well as Tammy Bailey and Megan Garvin, all from the middle school. Carrie LaBretton is a tech teacher, she works at both Bryn Mawr and the Packer Chog School. Charity Wong Cam works at Bryn Mawr School, and from Packer Chog, we have Gillian Hakens and Lisa Lamir, and Jen Demak Leo from Swanton Road School. So letters of congratulations and thanks have gone to each of them. And then finally, within this section, is the Assabide Valley Collaborative Quarterly Report for the first quarter, so you just need to accept that it has been provided to you.
I understand that motion.
Make a motion to accept the ABC first-quarter report for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote. And on to unfinished business.
Before, sorry, through the chair. Do we know where we fall in the STEM program in Massachusetts? Is that something we could...
Through the chair, I don't know that I've seen anything that targeted Massachusetts only, I'll make a note, and we can look and see.
All right.
Sometimes there are polls and rankings that are done that we're unaware of, like the U.S. News and World Report, when they came out, we didn't provide anything to them. They had some analysis they did based on data that must be public information, so we can try and see if there's any way.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
The one thing I'll know is, Project Lead the Way is really well-regarded in that respect.
Okay.
And so while it's just at the elementary schools, we may look to get a grant to move it up next year, and the elementary schools can even grow it more, so this, now they're only doing two units over the course of the year, because that's how they advise you to get introduced to it, but that's something that may grow, too. So the fact that we have our foot in the door with that's a really good thing.
Great.
Did we take that vote? I already forgot.
Yeah.
All in favor, yes? Aye, okay. All right, moving on.
So the next one, I'm happy to share with you, that 49 students at Auburn High School qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and Dr. Chamberlain and I will be joining Mr. Handfield for our annual breakfast, which is pre-Thanksgiving, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we do a breakfast in their honor, so I want to congratulate them. And in your packet is a copy of the letter that went to all of those students.
Question, excuse me. Doesn't that give them the right DECO to State University for free tuition?
It does. So the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and it needs to be a combination of proficient and/or exemplary in scores, they need to be in the top 25% of their class, they earn free tuition to state colleges and universities for eight semesters.
That's a good deal. And I noticed Ally is on the list.
She is, she is on that list, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great group. Next is the TRY-M Honor Society, so this is a music honor society, which recognizes exceptional music students in grades six through 12, who meet the music, academic, leadership, and character criteria, asked of every TRY-M member. So noted here are the students who were inducted this year. Dr. Chamberlain was able to attend that ceremony, just another example of an opportunity in which our students can excel and be recognized, really, for their hard work. So congratulations to all of them as well.
Yes, that's great.
And you'll note that Aaron Zhang, our other student rep, has been elected to TRY-M.
Oh, yeah.
The next item, in your packet, I provided for you the NESDEC enrollment report. And if you'll note, on the first page, it's really historical enrollment, so it looked back from years 2004 through 2014, in the historic enrollment by grade. Then you see the grade combinations from the '9-, '10 school year to the one we are in currently, and then the historic percentage changes, up and down, with some variability. So if you go to the third page in, that is called the Auburn-Nass projective enrollment, so the one before that is the historical enrollment, just shows it in a biograph form. So in this one here, what they looked at, and Dr. Chamberlain and I did a conference call, you can see that they're estimating, based on the estimate of births, children already born, and students already enrolled, so those are the color coding that has taken place there. Most important to note is in the bottom left-hand corner and the bottom right-hand corner. So if you look at the bottom right, they're showing in the 2021 school year, next school year, it's projected that there will be 2,532 students, which is a net gain of three across the district. As you'll recall, all of the information regarding the reserve at Ashworth Hill, that was provided to them as well, and I will say one thing that Mr. Kennedy had explained was, he felt strongly that the projections that they had made, based on the statistical analysis that he has done, for the 67-student impact, he thought was right in line with what we could expect to happen.
So this includes those projections?
It does. He does have that information, so it does include those projections. One of the things that he had pointed out is that the number of births in Auburn have been slowly going down, so he made a projection that that would continue to happen as well. So you'll see here, in the following school year, in '21, '22, that we'll see an increase of 21, and then in '22, '23, an increase of 30. Then it really levels off, so it looks like there's a couple of years where we see, you know, double-digit increases, it levels off, and then towards the end of this period, that we'll actually start to see reductions. And one thing that he had mentioned is that approximately 90% to 95% of school districts have actually been seeing declining enrollments, where Auburn, as I had sort of in the report there, from 2012 to 2019, we've been seeing increasing enrollments. One variable that is hard to actually calculate in here is how many families may move out of Auburn, and how many might move in. So you'll see on the next, if you go to the final page of the document, it has some graphs in there that shows the variability, but the building permits issued, so you can see back in 2005, there were 54 single-family building permits issued, and then 2018 was only 15. Now, this shows zero in 2019, and we questioned that, and he said, well, his source, really, is the HUD program. So what happens is, and I can follow up with the town department, is they provide the information to the state, and then it goes, I think, to HUD, and then it becomes public information. But based on building permits, and I remember when we went through the process getting our enrollment projection for the new Auburn Middle School, probably seven years ago at this point, and we provided similar information, the, you know, birth census information and building permits as well, and they had done a building projection for Auburn Middle School of 560 students. So we've already surpassed that. Fortunately, we built a building that was big enough to handle that swing in there. But I thought it was interesting information. Also important to note is, on that third page in the projected enrollment, that does include, and it makes an assumption, that the same number of school choice students we have now will continue. One thing, when Dr. Chamberlain and I were looking at this, I do think it's gonna be important for us to keep in mind, particularly at the middle school, that when we look, most notably in the '21, '22, '22, '23, and up through the '26, '27 year, that I think we're gonna want to give serious consideration when we want to continue the school choice in those years. So we have about 25 or 26 students, and it varies sometimes with siblings, whether we would want to continue to do that at Auburn Middle School. If you look to the far right in the yellow column, the numbers at Auburn High School stay pretty steady until you get to about '24, '25, and then that bubble from the middle school is fully shifted up there. So I think that, you know, in a couple of years, we may want to consider not having the school choice slots at the middle school, or at least in the same number that we currently have. I don't think we want to tax it, tax the school or the programs.
Because once we take them in, they have the right to stay all the way through, right?
They do, exactly right, exactly right, so...
As well as the number of siblings.
Mm-hmm.
So even if we cancel the program, the siblings would still...
So if you, so it's an annual vote by the school committee, so if you voted to continue school choice, say, at the high school, no new middle school students could come in. Currently, when they get into sixth grade, they're eligible... Currently, when they get into sixth grade, they're eligible to join. So we need to think about that. I don't have a concern at all at Auburn High School, and even probably until the '25-'26 school year, that's really weird. But if we were to slow it or eliminate it at the middle school, those kids wouldn't be factored in at the high school level.
That's a good source of funding.
Yeah, there's, through the chair, I was going to say, how would that, how do you weigh the cost to just carrying the kids and having them here versus losing the funding?
Right. And that's going to be a discussion that will need to be had, to really look at. You know, when you add in 20, and it's been, I would tell you, I think it has been a very positive program for the Auburn public schools. You know, the studies that I've done in terms of participation in extracurricular, transcripts, attendance rates, discipline, it has been as favorable or better than our students in every regard. And even Mr. Kennedy, when we talked to him, and when I had gotten a report on the MASs Executive Committee from a woman who had done a study at DESI. But part of that is because parents have to make a commitment because they have to get their children here from out of town and stuff, so.
They take school seriously.
Yeah, and so, but it has benefited the district greatly. We've gotten some great kids who have joined, our own amazing students. But the money that we've had, we use about $500,000 as an offset in each annual budget. So that's going to be a consideration too. But I think too, important to note is, these are projections. So I think they bear watching very carefully, you know. So I think that we will do that. You know, conversely, you see at the younger grades, they cater to. They stay somewhat steady. You start to see a slight decline. But really, when you look from the current year, 546, 546, to 10 years down the road, 532, those are pretty steady numbers. You see a little bit of up and down in there. And honestly, the same thing with three to five. In fact, there you see a slight reduction, but not a huge one. Not a huge one.
So through the chair, can I just ask about the, because we're talking about the younger kids, have we seen an uptick, and I don't know if we have this data, of people moving in specifically to leverage our preschool program? Because we know that kind of gives them a foot in the door. Do we see people? I know before, we've seen a lot of people move in right before middle school or right before high school, but it just seems like our preschool program is booming now.
Yeah, so through the chair, I would tell you, when we look at, in the current school year, for all of the new registrations, the Swanton Road, grades three to five, had the most increase this year.
Okay.
But I don't know that I would say that there's been a trend in that. It varies, you know. So I think the biggest question mark is going to be the reserve at Ashworth Hill and families moving in there. In fact, one of the things that Mr. Kennedy had said is, you know, more often than not, people move in with younger children there, younger families, younger adults, younger families, you know, that move in. And the difference would be whether they come and stay living there or come, get established, and then buy a home either here or elsewhere in the vicinity. So that, I think, is the greatest thing. But I think it's worth bearing. It was, I think, an interesting exercise and, you know.
It's very interesting. I can't even imagine the type of criteria that goes into this. And it's nice that we have a document to, I guess, somewhat loosely follow, but I would not, I certainly would not put all my eggs in this basket because I can't imagine where they're coming up with some of these numbers, especially the low birthing rates. I mean, who's making, who's making, I think that's kind of a decision you make on the fly. No, I mean, they're selling, they're selling, there's, some of the older folks are selling their homes, younger people are moving in. I'm guessing that's when these things are going to take place. How do they know when and how many of the elderly people are selling and how many retiring early? And it's just, there's so much that goes into it, again.
There's, through the chair, there's without question, great variability. They really look at past trends of what has happened and try to project them with some data into the future. But, you know, so I think it bears watching. They did, there was a NESDEC report that was done probably about 15 or 18 years ago. I should pull that out to see long prior to my, to see how closely it related in things.
There's also, the other factor is also, the town leadership can turn around, and the town can turn around in three or four years, and you see that in other towns. Some are on the upswing, and some towns quickly go downhill when they lose good town leadership. So there's just so many factors. And of course, that would keep people from wanting to move into town. Hopefully the school, that doesn't happen with the schools.
No.
We'll try to.
No, not alone.
You heard something?
Yeah, well, it's just, two years from now, he's saying, you know, two to three years, it's 51 kids potentially coming, and that's Bryn Mawr's side, isn't it? Over here with the projections with the kids, because of that new development, it's 21 kids for the years 2021 to '22, and then another 30 kids.
So those, so through the chair, yes, you're correct. So in two years' time, we would get 51 additional students. But those are across the entire district. So the sole impact of this is not just the reserve at Ashworth Hill. He didn't, so this is across the district.
Okay.
That we see that, yes, yes.
So it wouldn't be 51 kids knocking on the door?
No. Through the chair, if that were the case, I would have been panicked bringing this to you, yes. That is not, not the sole criteria.
All right.
So just a reminder, budget presentations, as I said, will continue tomorrow evening as well.
Okay, and we now move on to new business.
So we were notified last week, so the town will have their annual budget kickoff. It will take place Wednesday evening at 7 o'clock. So Mrs. Wirth, Vicky and I will attend and hear what they have and bring that back to you at the December 4 meeting. Student Government Day, we've been recently notified by Senator Moore's office. It's going to be the 73rd annual one. It'll take place in April. And students have been identified who will attend that program with Mr. Kennard on their annual trip. And actually, I will make a note to see if we can't have them come in to tell you about that experience. And if you recall, Madison Poshkus actually got the opportunity to serve as the governor.
Yeah.
And gave a rousing speech, actually, which was quite exciting. So Megan Solgren and Sidney Fany will be attending this year, so we're excited to have them do that. Earlier today was the fire safety poster contest. The winners award ceremony, I should share. So noted here, Bell and Nguyen from Bryn Mawr, and Emma Howland from Packerchog, grade one, Allison Hanscom at Bryn Mawr, grade two, and Mae Foley from Papp, grade two. Grade three was Ava Russell and Benjamin Shelton. Grade four was Kylie Holt and Madeline Steele. And grade five was Alyssa Jervasi and Emma Ellis. So I do want to thank firefighter Steele, as well as the team. He was actually covering a firehouse in Worcester today due to Lieutenant Menard's funeral. So Deputy Chief Johnson did the award ceremony. And I will tell you, it was priceless, the look on Benjamin Shelton and Alyssa Jervasi's faces when it was announced that they were the winners of the brand-new bicycle. It was so exciting. Benjamin was trying a little harder to keep his smile inside, but it was showing in his face. Alyssa's was just all over her face. So great. So exciting. Next, the Swiss donation. So the Elementary PTO has donated $2,000 to the Swiss Student Activity Account, and it is my recommendation that you approve that. Those funds will then be used by Swanton to bring in different programs and things to support your students.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept a add to the donation of $2,000 from Elementary PTO to the Swiss Student Activity Account.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
We really do have amazing support organizations, with their generosity is great. I did want to let you know that we received a request to negotiate from our school custodians group. They're represented by Teamsters Union Local 170. So we're in the process now of working to schedule some dates. So obviously, guidance will be sought from you in executive session. But in a brief conversation with Mr. Duhem, I do believe this probably won't happen until after the first year.
Yeah.
That's what I anticipate. And then one item that was not on the agenda, we were just made aware of it today. I'm happy to report that we had seven students who were selected. They were recently notified that they've been accepted to the All-New England Honor Band, and they'll participate in a festival at Plymouth State University on November 25th, so a week from today. So we have Emma Shiller, Erin Lambert, Caleb Nordman, Sidney Lyons, Haley Norris, Audrey Johnson, and Jason Roberts. So based on the fact that it is a field trip out of state, it does require your approval. So hopefully you can, we can get that motion from you.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the AHS band trip to the All-New England Honor Band Festival at Plymouth State University on November 25th.
Second.
Any discussion?
So that's New Hampshire?
It is, Plymouth, yes.
Okay.
Good for them. It's excellent.
It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
And then with regard to upcoming events, although it has just passed, across the district, students and staff wore blue for World Diabetes Day. And Mr. Desto actually even had his wife spray paint his hair blue. And it is on our Facebook, electric blue. And we were in a meeting, and staff from across the district, students, it was great. We were in a meeting with an outside representative, and I was a little late at the meeting. I was finishing something here before I went to the middle school, and it was really hard to have a serious conversation. And students and families of children with diabetes wrote into the district school. They really appreciated this important thing, so.
I imagine that would have been interesting if you had a parent conference.
We did see him.
Yeah, you couldn't miss it.
You couldn't miss that. That meeting was maybe on Thursday, so we saw him Friday at the community food program that they had over at the middle school. And he said it was quite a few washings before he got it up. So I got it out, I should say.
Was it at least this blue?
It was, it was quite that shade.
Yeah, and maybe it'll tinge brighter.
It could have been, yeah.
It was bright.
It could have been, so, yeah.
He went all in.
I think Mr. Desto enjoys these days and these costume days, maybe sometimes more than the kids.
He does. And then we will be here together, obviously, tomorrow night too. But just in case I forget to say it tomorrow night, I hope all of you here and everybody at home watching has a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday break, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. And we now move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening, business and financial.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I provided the year-to-date budget report in your packets, dated November 8. And with that, I have a list of transfers, both within the same series and between different series. I ask for your approval of the transfers as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by business manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
I've also included in your packet a revolving account, a memo with regard to seeking your approval to establish a revolving account named Unified Sports. Allison DeLucas has been working diligently with special ethics to bring a unified sports school day games to Auburn here. We provide that, and one of the things that we'd like to do is we're trying to raise money. And this account would house the funds received from fundraising efforts and donations received on behalf of the Auburn Unified Athletes, thereby allowing the district to host and participate in a unified school day games on a yearly basis, we're hoping. So the fund would be established in accordance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 47. And all the funds allocated and donated will be used for unified sports team programming. Would you approve of this, superintendent? So I ask for your support in that.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the establishment of a revolving account for Unified Sports per the business manager's recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question. Adam in favor, but to date, what have we been doing for funding? Have they just been sharing with our physical education budget?
Through the chair, we initially, when we launched this, now probably five years ago, we received a small grant from Special Olympics to get this off the ground. And any other costs have been absorbed by the budget, whether it's perhaps some athletic revolving or some money that we found in operating to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Haven't they done fundraisers too?
They have done some fundraisers, yes, they have. Yes, they have. A blanket one too, yeah.
So was your question, what account is that going back into when they do the fundraising? Or where's the money sitting? Is that?
It was more just, what are we, how have we been dealing with it to date? Because I know they have had fundraisers, and I was more just curious as to if that would impact. Otherwise, it seems like it wouldn't, and everything is just passed through, so.
One big part is we've participated in years past with Leicester, in the Special Olympics program there, and we're hoping just to start our own unified program here with our unified teams.
So this gives them their own money, rather than pulling from either one.
Correct.
Special Olympics has been very supportive as well, working really diligently and collaboratively.
They've done so well with unified sports.
Sounds great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I can just mention again, so this Thursday evening at Auburn High School is the much-anticipated Auburn High School Unified Athletes versus District Faculty Basketball Game. So it's slated for 6 o'clock and should be about an hour. And if you have any free time, I encourage you to come and watch it. It promises to be a very fun event.
I believe they're doing a lot of rafters baskets.
They are doing rafters, yes.
Yeah, so it'll be a great opportunity, maybe add some nice things to.
Hoping for a great turnout.
Yes.
It's going to be a great night.
Yeah.
Very excited about it, so thank you.
Those kids must be thrilled about this.
They are. They enjoy.
So that's the other one.
All right, well, thank you for that report. Great, as always, nothing under personnel or policies. And we do need an executive session.
We do, very brief, yes.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to have an exciting session from NASS General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Yes. This is a vote. Good night, everyone.